Bananas Sidhuas, many of God's blessings to all of you here. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This oversight hearing conducted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Historic Preservation will now come to order. It is about 11:08 right now. And I want to say for the record pursuant to 5 GCA Chapter 8 Subsection 8107, public hearing notices were sent out on Tuesday, July 7th, which meets the five-day requirement. And then also, a second public notice was sent out on July 10th, 2015, which meets, adheres to the 48-hour requirement based on statute. I'd like to thank my members that have come here this morning for this oversight with Guam Housing Corporation. Joining me is Senator Frank Blas to my left, and to his left is Senator Tony Ada, and to his left is Senator Mary Camacho Torres. Thank you so very much for being here this morning. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for showing up as the Oversight Committee on Guam Housing. Can somebody? Okay. Make sure your lights are off until you're ready to speak. Okay? Okay. As Oversight Committee for the Guam Housing Corporation, ladies and gentlemen, I felt that it was incumbent upon me as your chairperson for the committee to conduct this oversight hearing, to meet with all of you, to discuss the present state of your various programs within Guam Housing Corporation. And in preparation for this oversight hearing, I want to tell the listening audience that I did send two Freedom of Information Act request letters dated July 8th and July 9th. Most of the information that was requested had been provided as of 5:30 PM yesterday. And I want to take this time to thank the staff of Guam Housing Corporation for compiling the information requested. And before we go any further, I would like at this time to ask Mr. Beneventi and all the supervisors of Guam Housing that are present, or anyone in the audience that is going to speak today, or may be able to answer some of the inquiries, to please at this time go ahead and stand and be sworn in, as this is an oversight council. Can you please stand to the chair in the housing?
Can I just get a question?
Yeah. Is Mr. Fisher, are you here as legal counsel for Guam Housing? Yeah, you can stand, please. You don't have to. Everybody? Thank you. As I said earlier, ladies and gentlemen, I sent two Freedom of Information requests on July 8th and on July 9th. And this is not normally how I would do things, but however, as chairperson on the Committee on Housing and as the co-chair of the Governor's Affordable Housing Coordinating Council, I find it necessary to have a complete picture of the status of Guam Housing Corporation's programs, so that we can assist when it's necessary. I want to say that in reviewing the minutes of several board meetings, it appeared that several of the board members as well were seeking a clearer picture of the true status of the programs. And the information was not necessarily flowing freely. So as a result, it was clear that this hearing is necessary, so that we can have a better understanding of what is occurring with the Guam Housing Corporation. I'd like to thank the vice chair and the vice speaker for sharing his presence this morning. Thank you, vice speaker. The information sought through the Freedom of Information Act's request is as follows. And I'll go ahead for the listening audience, read it. The current staffing pattern of Guam Housing Corporation, all personnel actions from October 2013 through July 8th, 2015, the current status of all rental accounts by unit, and I did ask to redact all personal information related to individual tenants, the current status of the first-time homeowners program, including a listing of all grants awarded from the inception of the program to date, the current status of the lease-to-own housing program authorized by 12 GCA Chapter 4 Article 9, and the current status of the Guam Housing Corporation Guarantee Fund authorized by that same chapter, the current status of the mortgage credit certification program authorized by 12 GCA Chapter 4 Article 8, the status of any and all emergency housing programs in place, and the rules and regulations governing such programs, the current status of any and all low-income housing developments currently under construction, being administered by Guam Housing Corporation, a list of all vendors supporting purchase orders and related contracts for calendar year 2012 to the present time, financial statements of calendar years 2010 through present, a listing of all vehicles currently within the Guam Housing Corporation inventory, their signed license plate numbers and the division within Guam Housing Corporation to which they are assigned, copies of all gas purchase records related to all the vehicles covered by request number one above for the calendar years 2013 to present, and a listing of all Guam Housing Corporation employees, if any, that are currently detailed to any other government of Guam agencies or departments, and a listing of all Guam Housing Corporation employees that have been detailed to other government of Guam agencies during calendars year 2013 to present. And upon reviewing the information provided, and again, I want to thank the staff for doing a good job to relay a lot of the information that was provided to me, and we did do a lot of the reading, and I also want to thank my committee staff, who literally helped go through these documents. I want to start out by saying that, I'll go ahead and start out with the rental units, because this is a big part of the resources that Guam Housing Corporation handles. In your inventory rental units, you reported the following as of May 31st, 2015. I'm going to, before I ask several questions, this is how I'm going to start it, I'm going to talk about Lata Gardens, Guma Asadus, and Saginatan, those housing programs. And then I'm going to share with you what I've garnered based on the information presented, and then I'll ask the questions, okay? So I want to say for the record, when I first looked at Lata Gardens, I saw that there were 95 units, active units, that have been occupied. But within those units, past due amounts were totaling over $77,647.30. The inactive units that account for this, this Lata Gardens is 13, and there are at least 20 vacant units. And at this time, I saw that there are three units that are being occupied by the homeless. But with that, the past due amounts for that, for the vacant units on uncollected revenues are at $42,378. On the Guma Asadus program, we have 15 units that are active units that are being occupied. The past due amounts on that, ladies and gentlemen, is at $18,059.92. There have been six inactive units, and out of that, there have been $22,795.15 that has been uncollected. There are nine units vacant, and two are occupied by homeless. The homeless, and I think that was just recently also. In the Saginatan program, the units there, there are six units, active units. The past due amount for those active units is at $6,873.39. There are five inactive units, and out of the vacant units, there are four units that are vacant, but two of which are occupied by homeless. And I want to ask the corporation, at least on the first ones, because when we had been working in the past, of course, our audits were clean, and we did have quite a number of resources in the coffers. And as I was looking at these programs now, I've noted that some of the past due amounts on some of the program, on some of the units, go as far back as 11 months, nine months, five months, four months, three months. And on the inactive units, some of that are the same. So the first question I would like to ask, and at least the housing program for the rental units, I have one, two, three, four. The first one would be, what actions are you taking to collect inactive accounts?
First of all, I just wanted to say that, you know, the people that live in these units, of course, they were all homeless. Some of them started off being able to afford these units, to pay on a timely basis. Then as time went on, some of them started to fail. We have attempted twice to send a team up to the rental site, so that they can start rearranging things. We found that there was a lot of tenants that didn't even have lease agreements and things like that. These were from the past administration that, you know, that managed Guam Housing rentals. So we, everybody that's behind, whether they're evicted eventually or not, those evicted will still go to the small claims court. And we don't forgive them for their debts. We just keep trying to collect. But they get evicted finally, and they're out of the units. So some of them in the past, I've tried to make a correction by asking the legislature if we could include Guam Housing Corporation in the garnishment of tax, income tax. Somehow, that was misinterpreted, and they put GURA instead of Guam Housing. So we're still not in that system. That would really help us a lot to collect some of these debts. But we continue to collect. We have our own teams, maintenance people, that I've asked to go around and knock on doors, and see what they can do to collect some of them. You're just not going to be able to.
Are there any active cases, Mr. Beneventi, in small claims right now at court?
Yes, sir. I'm sure there is.
Who can answer that question?
Do we have a number?
Right now, we have about 10.
10?
There's 10 in small claims.
Oh, okay.
And the other thing that we've initiated is that we've, before we accept new tenants now, it goes through a committee that takes a look at their, look at their income, their ability to manage and continue paying for whatever rent is asked of them. So even that's been cleared out. In the past, it was just whoever showed up. You'd take them in, and then you, you know, you put them into units and try to get that rent every month, which doesn't always happen.
Well, I guess with respect to the vacant units, what are you doing to get new tenants in these units? As I look at the different programs, the vacant units are at 20, they're at, at...
You got to take a look at Senator, the Lata Gardens. Lata Gardens are in most part 50-year-old structures. That's never been renovated, never been, some of them, they just get cleaned out, and the same walls are left there. They're termite it, they just paint it. They never had major renovation done to them for 30 years.
I'm smiling, because I just went to a couple of ribbon cuttings where houses were renovated out, and renovations and refurbishments were done, so that units could be moved into, because am I under the, wait, maybe I should ask this next question. I was told that there have been a waiting list, and I know that, working closely with Guam Housing and as Oversight Chair of GURA, just based on the opening statement, I know that if they don't qualify for Guam Housing, because this is also about true home ownership and getting that, we have another program with, which is 100% federally funded, which can be transferred to GURA. And I know that there's one of the former Board of Directors that is sitting in the audience, who is a part of GURA, or was a part of GURA. So I'm just asking, if you said it hasn't been renovated in 50 years, then...
Let me explain, Senator. I think you're, yes, we have some units that have been renovated, but I don't think we're at even the 10 mark. We have 115 Lata homes that exist. Out of that, like I said, maybe we've done, completed 10. It costs about 40-some thousand dollars every time we want to totally renovate these units, and we don't have that fund. So whatever we have, if we can afford to do two, we'll do two. And that's how we've been doing that. We're looking for, and we have in the planning, to, a way to do a total renovation of the entire 115. And the next few months, we'll be working on that. But we have that. We've been planning to do something like that. Some of the better ways we've done it in the past, when we totally renovated Asadus, was they just put in 400,000 to 500,000 into the, and bid it out, their renovation. But we don't have the money to renovate 115 immediately. And now talking about those people that qualify for Section 8, you're right, 100%, of these people qualify, I mean, need that Section 8 program, where you go in and you pay only what you can afford. GURA also pays for their power and water. We don't have enough of those vouchers sitting around to give everybody that's homeless. And that's why we've been trying to introduce our own local version of a Section 8 program, because most of the people that are coming in can't afford, they can't afford to even pay for their own power. So there's a few that qualify, and we tried to put them in these new renovated units. Some are not being renovated, they're just being cleaned out and put on a get-ready status. But we won't get to that for a while. So yes, you're right, we do need to put them in a program like that. And we do plan to, we have a solution. I have a testimony prepared to tell you. I can just submit it to save time, so you guys can review it. But it's not the total solution. What we're doing now needs a lot more help. We've been raising that red flag, white flag, whatever flag you want to do, we want to put up. We've been raising it and asking for help, and hopefully that one day, real soon, we can work on the Housing Trust Fund, funding the Housing Trust Fund with our suggested funding sources. And if, once that's in, you know, in my testimony, it'll show you that if we had done this way back when we first initiated the Housing Trust Fund and put the funding with it, we would have money sitting in that account for, ready to handle even our problems with the typhoon, the last typhoon, and other problems that we face. That is where the solution is. We've been staying afloat, just because we've been staying afloat. And, you know, with whatever money we had, we stayed afloat. We've had good audits for the last four years. We've been submitting our financial reports every month to the governor and to this legislature. And there are flags in there waving left and right. But we need to sit down, and we need your help. We have the solution. We just need some bills passed, like you've been helping us in the past with. When we pass, when you pass those bills, solutions occur.
Yes, and this body has been able to do that, most recently with the support of over a quarter of a million dollars back to Guam Housing Corporation. Vice Chair, do you have any questions?
Yes, you have.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Senator Blas. Turn on. Thank you. Mr. Chair, thank you very much for being here. I'm just going to go back to, I guess, some of the presentations made earlier, and with regards to payments made to Guam Housing Corporation. And it appears that in some instances, there is, I guess, past due amounts. Prior to sending them to small claims, what is the effort, or what is the procedure for individuals to make payment to Guam Housing?
We basically called them in, and one time, I had two people walking the streets just knocking on doors. And some of them came in, made arrangements to pay, some of them just said, you know...
But what is generally, what is normally the procedure for them to make payments? What's the process?
They have a payment, what do we call it?
Huh?
No, the receipt.
Yeah. Each tenant has a coupon book, because we don't receive cash anymore. We tell them to go to the bank and pay it at the bank. So when they fall behind, we would call them in and ask them to make a plan. And if the plan can be made, can't be made, then we would just move on to eviction.
Okay, so the process is...
We've been sending out eviction notices already.
These coupons, with the coupons, they go to the bank?
Yes.
Okay. And so how frequent do you get your notification from the bank that these deposits were made? And by who?
The bank notifies us.
On a monthly basis? At least, I worry.
Daily.
So it's daily? So when you're looking at basically 30, 60, 90 days past due, you're basing it on an individual who was supposed to make a payment on the 14th today. He doesn't make that payment. Okay, and so you, there is a process to monitor when, whether or not these individuals are making the payments? Who? So the bank, I mean, the corporation gets these notifications from the bank, there's somebody that sits there and sees who made this payment and that payment?
Yes, we do. There is, there is an earlier, there was a glitch earlier, you know, there was a tenant relations manager who used to run the program there. And when he was running it, we didn't see any problems with it. And I meant, we just didn't see any problems with it. But later on, he had to be removed from the position. Now, civil services told us not to fill those, that position until the case has been settled. It's in court right now. And so now, we're lacking what we call a tenant relations manager, which is the guy that handles all these things that are...
Let me go ahead and do a follow-up question on that. Based on the application in order to have a rental unit or to get a unit with Guam Housing, are there, is there a process that you guys use, so that you can determine the ability to pay on each of the tenant that comes in for this program? Isn't there, because that's why there's a GURA, and that's why there's a Guam Housing, was to provide for that affordability for the working-class families who couldn't meet the perspective of building their own house, but to be able, and not qualify for GURA, but be that in-between, and that's why the enabling legislation gives that to Guam Housing. So was there, is there a process for the ability to pay? I mean, and how do you qualify? Just like the banks, you go in, you give your statements, how much you make, you know, you don't qualify for GURA. Don't, do you have that printed?
Yes, we do. I said earlier that there was a committee that reviews that now, based on their income, can they afford to pay that monthly rent plus power and water? And all those documents are asked of the tenants, of prospective tenants, and we review it.
Okay, so I think the other follow-up question, before I give it back to Senator Blas, was based on that, when does the Guam Housing Corporation go out and tell that individual, have you received financial accounts daily from the banks? When does that information, that they're delinquent 30 days, 45 days, 90 days, when does it go to you, from you guys to the board, or go back to the tenant, ask, tell them, why are you late, what's going on? I mean, usually, we give considerations and through compassion, or medical reasons and all that, but when do you say, hey, you know what? Your ability to pay is there...
Ideally, it shouldn't be more than 30 days. Once you're behind, you should be told that you're behind. But I'm saying that there was a person that had that job for quite a while, and then we lost him.
And what's happening right now, if the courts told you not to hire anybody? What's the...
It's not the courts, it's Civil Service Commission.
Or Civil Service Commission? What's the action? What has the action of the...
The board, I've asked the board to create another position on top of that, and they have. And we're trying to see if we can hire somebody for that position.
So creating another position based on the position that you can't fill is the solution to, to, to...
It's the same position that GURA uses to manage their app, their different apps. That's the position that we created.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, please.
That position...
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Okay. Frank Florrick. And I'm the chairman of Guam Housing. Now, going back to your question about the position being created, that position was created to replace the tenant relation, only because of the job description. It was not to create the position so we can do away with, so we can hire somebody in the interim. Definitely, that was not, that was not the intent of the board. We were advised that the position, we had the description of the position was old, and that we were trying to stay in line with how GURA had had that particular position filled.
Okay, so based on the position that is presently, that was there, was, and that person who was in that position, just based on what he was saying, was that case resolved? Was it settled? Was it, is that, there's no, I mean, you guys have approved in the past to accepting temporary positions to have employees fill, so what has happened?
That position, I would defer that question to our legal counsel, but I know that we're going through legal processes. And whether it's resolved today or not, I don't believe it's resolved. I think we're taking it to the next level. So I would defer that to our legal counsel.
It hasn't been resolved. It's just, we're waiting, awaiting the results to come out from the court. But in the meantime...
But you just said, when I said the court, she said, no, civil service. What do you mean, the courts?
No, civil service is the one that tells you not to fill positions until the cases have been settled. The courts is just trying to inject, they're part of decide, you know, solving that problem. The court is something else. The civil service is the one that...
Is it on the same matter, on the same position?
Yes.
So the findings from the court is not in yet?
That's right.
Mr. Chair, answer the question.
I don't quite understand that question you're asking.
It's not completed yet, it's still in...
Again, I want to...
You guys created, you guys asked the board to, the management has asked the board to create another position to handle that, when you guys have put in acting positions in the past. And I know that, just based on reading records, and that's why I'm asking you, if that case is not done yet, where is it at right now?
That's how, that's how I tried to solve that problem earlier. I put people that were onboard to be acting, so that we test them out, to see if they can handle that program. It's a very massive thing to manage, 157 units. So, you know, it takes a...
Have you done it in the past?
Done what?
Have you put anybody in the acting position in that to try?
Yes, we have.
And, 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 how long has that been? And, 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 and how long has that lasted?
Well, we had...
Is there anyone right now? Is Mr. Beaver on that right now? Is anybody here on that?
No, no, it is back to the rental staff handling it.
Maybe when we get to personnel, I'll ask about the rental staffs since you brought it up. Senator Blas, I do apologize.
Senator, you know, going back to your question, I just want to make it clear that the position that was created was not to create a second position, but it was to update the existing position of the tenant relation. I, I want that to be perfectly clear.
I, I understand.
Okay. Because I, I just don't want the confusion that that was created so we can do away with, with the gentleman or the person that's currently occupying that, because that was certainly not the intent. It was to bring our, our staffing, if you will, to the standards of today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going back to the collections, you're told that you have currently 10, I guess, cases, collection cases or...
Small claims.
Small claims. Who makes that determination as to when is this is going to go to small claims?
Our rental staff in Lata.
Okay. How long does it take before, what, what, at what stage of the delinquency do you...
We've been asking them to start at 30, not, not sooner, but right around that. Once you're a month behind, you start working on. I have no idea how many are there right now at this point, but, but they are evicting and collecting.
So the 10 that you have right now, there was staff that determined that, okay, we've exhausted all our efforts to be able to collect after so many days. Is there procedure or is there something in writing that says after you reach this pinnacle, this point of not collect, you know, not being able to collect, that's when you turn it over to, to collections? Is it, what, 45 days? Is it 60 days? Is it 90 days? Is it, what, what, at what point do you turn that over?
I'm, I'm marking it at 30 days, but we've had people that are over that. And we're working on trying to get them either to pay, make arrangements, or they will get evicted.
So if you're marking it at 30 days, I just need to be very clear here. Is it safe, are you telling me then that all those individuals that are past 30 days past due are in collections?
I'm assuming that, only because I haven't had a...
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So then, then, then we would have to correct the information that was provided here. Senator Frank, if I may, because just showing on the active units and those available, there are some active units where the occupants are in the house that are nine months past due and still in, in the unit, 11 months past due, still in the unit, and nine months, five months, four months, three months, and you just said 30 days. I, I'm really just trying to find a result because I want to bring resources, as we've always supported in the legislature, to give Guam Housing the money they need. But as I'm looking at this, just based on what you're saying, I'm seeing that active unit members in the unit have gone all the way up to 11 months not paid, and they're still in the unit. And, and believe me, I'm one who has the compassion to try and, and work with them. But if you say 30 days and you're up to 11 months, what are we doing as, as, as an agency to, to bring that down?
I very easily just evict people, but that's not where we're at. Because once you let them out of that door, they come back to Guam Housing at another door as the homeless. Now, we have 20 units sitting empty, and we have people that are out there homeless because we kicked them out. Now, I, I'm looking for a solution.
You have seven homeless families right now in your vacant units.
Yeah, because we designated those units because they were empty anyways. And we designated them as a temporary place to put these homeless people in.
Okay. So what resources or what funding is being utilized?
Our, our own, our own, until we can get the help that we're asking for.
When you say the help, the help from this legislature?
Yes, Madam.
But you have programs that exist today that provide for that.
No, we're, there's a lot of programs that we're sampling so that when you come to us and tell us that we have a housing problem and you ask me how to solve it, I'll tell you that this is the solution, and we've tested it, and it works. But somebody has to fund that. And, and every day, I get hammered for trying to pay for a power bill for somebody that's living inside one of our empty units. But the only solution, and we can all be like what you're saying, and just move them out.
I, I understand.
And that's the ultimate solution.
That, that's not what it's meant, Mr. Beneventi.
I know.
I'm, I'm sharing with you only because even with the federal program that GURA handles today, those occupants are obligated to pay at least the minimum of utilities.
I know, but they, they don't pay rent, most of them.
So are you actually telling me right now, based on this, because maybe, what is the timeline for the homeless folks to be? If you had somebody who was homeless who moved into that vacant unit that could be rented out, how many months have you given them to stay there? And who's footing the bill? Is it Guam Housing? Is it the governor's office? Is it GURA? Do you have a partnership with GURA? I know that you have a, a, a project that will help assist within the resources.
We look everywhere. We've gone to Salvation Army, we've gone to the other...
Have they been paying?
Some of them have, yes. There are times when they put out their funds and help us with that. And that comes indirectly from GURA. We've, you know, we even had a lady come in that was living in a bus shelter, and we found out that she could afford to rent from her social security income. We have a few success stories, and we're not ready to, to say everybody will, will be a successful story. But in the end, somebody's got to make the decision that after 30 days of living in our unattended units, what do we do? I'm, I'm returning that question to us as the community. We need to accept the fact that we have a housing homeless problem in Guam, and let's find a, a solution. And the solution is, it's been in, in this legislature for quite some time already.
Senator, if I, if I may?
Yes.
I want to get back to the very basic question that, that Senator here has asked. When do we start collection efforts? Well, the board has set a moratorium with the staff to start getting collection at 90 days. And they have until the end of July, our next board meeting, to actually, and it's, it's all on the record, if you look at our meetings, it's stated there, that we're giving them to the end of, of, or to our next board meeting, to actually come up with a list, and we'd like to see no greater than 90 days to start with. Now, we will take those beyond that on a case-to-case basis. But that is what we're, we're looking at. We also had actually gone into our lease agreement, and we have seen that the rent in our lease agreement is due on the first, but they've got a 30-day grace period. We plan on correcting that. There's no reason to have them go 30 days. We should probably bring them up 10 days, on the 10th of every month. Now, the question I did bring up was, when a tenant moves in on the 15th, again, my assumption is that they're being prorated to the end of the month, which they should be, and that all the, all the rent theoretically should be due on the 1st of every month. So that's, that's the steps we're taking to correct this problem. And, and hopefully, it'll, it'll work. Now, we have, we have been very firm with, if they don't come up with it or take it on a case-to-case basis, but we definitely need to evict them. Now, keeping in mind that, and, and Mr. Beneventi had shared something that I think the community of Guam is all going to be affected with. We kicked out 40 families at one time. You've got 40 families that are homeless. Couple that with children. We can't, you know, we can't solve our problem and then create an island problem. So this is where we practice, you know, or, or, this is where we practice some, some sense of compassion. Some of these families, we know, will go through all extremes to help themselves and show us that they're trying to help themselves by getting something into us. And then there are some that just think that it's owed to them. Those are the ones that we're trying to get rid of. The ones that will come forward and, and try to help themselves, certainly, we would exercise compassion. And, and I've even suggested to the staff that what we should do is do some screening and send them up to, to GURA, if that be the case. Again, it comes back to Section 8 vouchers.
And GURA just puts them on a list. I'm sure we could do something like that, too. But I, I think that we need, you know, we've never had a homeless problem as, in the magnitude that we have it today. People are actually living in bus shelters. Every time we find one, we try to find a way to move them out, make them human again. I don't know. I think that's the answer, is to remind them what they are. Because some of them have, are living out there in, in really, really, really bad conditions. The typhoon shelters got filled up very fast because of that fact, that people are just living out there in canopies, they're living in lean-tos with dirt, dirt floors. They're there, and it's not, it's not healing itself. We've offered suggestions for how to handle the immigrant problem. We've talked to the council general. We've tried to show them that there's a way that, that that problem can be handled. We're, we're, you know, it's, it's going to hit us hard if we don't start preparing. And that's why we've offered, in the beginning of 2012, when this legislature helped us create the Housing Trust Fund, we didn't fund it. Now, we're saying, let's fund it. And we're providing, suggesting the funding source. I mean, I, I've talked to all of you at one time or another to help me with that. And I think it's time to look at that. And then you can come back and say, in a few months after the initiation of the trust fund, say, what are you doing now? And I'll tell you that we have programs that are ready to fly. But, but we've inherited things here that are...
I understand, Mr. Beneventi, and I can appreciate. And, and first off, I appreciate the concern and the compassion. Two concerning things that though, I mean, that I find just in listening to the conversation. Mr. Beneventi, you says you want this done in 30 days in as far as the collection. Mr. Florrick says that the board mandate says it's 90 days.
Yes.
Okay. Right there, I see. Okay, which one are we doing there? 30 days, 90 days?
Well, that, you asked what was, was my desire, because I own apartments, too.
I understand your desire.
And you do, too, and we wouldn't like to see it go past 30 days, but...
Secondly, is that I appreciate, Mr. Florrick, your concern with regards to, you know, payment due on the 1st, but a 30-day grace period. Because then the question, then, I need to back, ask the question, if there's a 30-day grace period, when does the 30 days begin? When you say that they're going to be 30 days past due? Who made that, who's making that determination?
We leave that up to management. But in my view, 30 days would be 30 days after the grace period, right?
That's, you would think...
I mean theoretically.
Right.
Right. So I think if we move that grace period closer, then it would give management a better tool to manage the delinquencies.
Right.
Because right now, they're, you know, they're going based on the contract, and I'm not, I'm, I'm saying that the board should have done due diligence in, in actually looking at this lease agreement earlier. And, and we just did because the, you know, the delinquencies became of real concern to us. And we stepped up and we just started giving directives that this is what's going to happen. And one of the things we did is we looked at, another board member actually read through that lease agreement. And this, this lease agreement has been around for a while now. So when, when he found that error there that says, you know, they've got a 30-day grace period, or it's, it's actually due, it's due on the 1st, but they've got that 30-day to pay anytime in the month. You know, it's, it's almost like a pay-any-day loan. And, and certainly, that doesn't help us out financially. So that was when we said, the board had said, well, the next board meeting, we'll look at moving that up.
Well, and then another concern, and I bring this up because I, first off, I appreciate, you know, the effort, but ultimately, the goal here is, is we want to reduce the homeless population. And I appreciate extending the hand. I, I also, you know, with regards to other NGOs, NGOs stepping up to the plate and wanting to provide the resources, hopefully, the financial resources to be able to do this thing. You know, one is, we've got units that obviously we're building so that we can lease or we can, you know, eventually provide to, to clients to be able to own. Am I correct? And there's a requirement for these individuals to be able to stay here, to be able to pay for the, for that roof over their heads. And the other side, within that same neighborhood, we have individuals that are homeless, that are not paying for anything. Are you setting yourself up here for a possible defense on an individual who you're trying to collect from to say, why are you trying to collect from me when you don't even charge this person over here? And, and, you know, I'm going to leave this to you, but again, I, you know, I, I just don't want to, down the road, somebody using that as...
Yeah, let me, let me assure this committee that we're, we're doing our best when it comes to that. We have other programs that we're working on. You know, homelessness can be solved in many different levels. We're, we're putting people in homes, too. We're qualifying people to own their own homes. With your Down Payment Assistance Program, we're up to almost 300 families that we've helped get into a new house or buying a house. So that's 300 that we don't have to worry about moving into Lata or any other places because they've got their own. We're doing model homes that have already begun. They're being permitted right now. And we're going, these are model homes that are less than $100,000. We can finance those. Then the next step, step is to go down to something below $50,000 and see if we can qualify these people. We're talking to FEMA to see what they can do instead of waiting till the typhoon is there to see if they can help us harden these homes before. They grant them X number of dollars in the states. They give them trailers, they give them things after the storms. Why not try to help them before the storm, storm? So we're talking in that level also. We suggested ways where the, the immigrant population gets taken care of, and we're hoping that that will be followed also by the, by the FSM or FAS. There's, there's a lot of ways that we're tackling this problem right now. But you're going to see some problems because we are running short. And we're trying to correct these things, but, and you're right about that. I would be the first to raise my hand and say, next door, you're not paying a penny. I would raise my hand. But what other choices do we have? We're experimenting, and those things are working. As soon as we can get funding, I would like to purchase units where we can put these people overnight, some people, some level of homelessness, to stay in a place overnight so that they can stay, remain human, shower, shave, and whatever else comes with that. Then in the morning, they can leave again. We were looking at some vacant units that were around, but we don't have the funds to buy it. We want to increase our rental income. We're looking for units to purchase or build. We've got a sat dust that's still in our inventory, and that's a property that the legislature gave to us many, 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 many years ago. And we're going to do something with that. We're going to try and fill up the, I mean, Segundo Lanzar, there's about 50 lots there that are vacant. We want to put people in there. But everybody can solve their homeless problem. Everybody is in different levels. You got people that there's no way they're going to pay anything. But so what do you do with that? You just leave them out in the, in the, in the parks and those places, the beaches? No, we try to find a, maybe a homeless facility that we can build down the line. We've talked to GURA about this. We're working on some things already. And then this rental thing is a problem. We're working on that. We're trying to put a person in there that, that can manage this space on a daily basis. In the meantime, some of our people have been playing acting, and they've gone in there... In the meantime, some of our people have been playing acting and they've gone in there, tried their best and have moved on. Acting capacity can only last for so many days again. So, you know, we do with what tools we have. And I think it can be better if we can have the funding that comes with that responsibility. Cause we have a lot of unfunded, even the, even the Down Payment Assistance Program, we not, never got a penny on administrative, uh, uh, costs. We just did it for the love of it, I guess is what you wanna say.
Okay, um, let's, again, I'm, I'm just a little concerned here as to the precedents that may be set.
Yes, sir. I understand that.
Um, let's take for example, the Lata Gardens. Okay? What was the funding source used to be able to rehabilitate or to build Lata Gardens?
Uh, we're getting that out of our operational funds where we're pulling it out. I think this year we only funded for two, right, Alicia?
The funding is coming from rentals. The income from rentals.
Okay, so the funding to rehabilitate and to get-
Absolutely, it's coming from the rentals, from, from the revenues being generated from the rentals of that particular area or the rentals we have all around.
This year we-
Asking your question.
You know what, I'm gonna go ahead and ask, you, you keep turning around, um, is that Alicia, your, your CFO or, why don't you come up and have a seat and, seat on the table, honey? Please, madam.
We've, we're funded this year for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to renovate at forty thousand apiece, um, whatever we can.
Hopefully you can answer some of the inquiries that Senator Blas has asked in reference to the numbers.
Okay, so, um, it goes to you, you say about a hundred and seventy thousand for-
This year we fund, uh, we put in our budget a hundred and seventy.
Okay. Based on your current occupancy, uh, two, two, I guess a two, two-part question, current occupancy and full occupancy, what are your, what are the figure, what are your projections for, for the year and as far as income?
That information is provided.
I understand.
Yeah.
Our projection for rental income was nine hundred and fifty-one thousand.
How much?
Nine hundred and fifty-one thousand.
I do apologize, just state for the record, your name and title.
Alicia Leon-Gorrell, Accounting Manager, Guam Housing Corporation.
Thank you, Alicia.
So that's nine hundred and fifty-one thousand and that's based on total occupancy or the current occupancy?
It's based on what we projected, including vacancy loss. So it, it includes loss of-
Okay, and we're just talking about one-site ladder or are you talking about all your-
I'm sorry, that's combined.
That's combined.
Yeah.
Do you have it broken down to, I, I just want your ladders, your Lata Gardens?
Uh, um, I don't have the, what we budgeted, um, we do have, what would be the hundred percent occupancy?
And when you say a hundred percent occupancy, how many units is that?
At Lata Gardens, we have a hundred and fifteen units. Seventy-four thousand just for Lata. That's a hundred percent.
Hundred and fifty units, seventy-four thousand.
Hundred and fifteen.
Hundred and fifteen thou- thousand.
Hundred and fifteen units.
Hundred and fifteen units.
Seventy-four a month.
Seventy-four thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's seventy-four thousand a month, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That was adding up. Okay, like, okay, where's the other eight hundred thousand dollars coming from?
Sorry.
What pot of gold do you, are you, are you hiding from? So a hundred and fifteen, seventy-four thousand dollars a month, seven hundred, so that's supposed to, yeah, that's, that's the bulk then of your-
Correct, yes.
Okay. Um, how many units do you have occupied right now? A hundred and fifteen of the hundred and fifteen you have?
Mr. Beneventi, is there anybody else up here that you want up here?
Ninety-three?
Yeah.
If we can get, uh, Mike.
Mike Martinez?
Mary, Mary prepared most of this. I'm just asking them because they should have that on their form every day.
Okay, um, and then the information that I guess the committee has, at least Chairwoman has here is that, um, of the 20 units that you have vacant, you have three being occupied by, by, by homeless. How long have they been there?
They all have different dates that they arise, so I don't know, um, it shouldn't be more than 30 days there.
Thirty, so, so what is your normal timeframe with regards to assisting homeless and being, you know, by, by providing them with housing?
When you say normal, we'd like to keep them there for 30 days. We do some, um, counseling and see if we can try to find them something else or, uh, see if they can start paying for some of it. You know, maybe instead of a free unit, they start to pay a little bit of what they can afford.
Okay.
Power, water, things like that. And, uh, we refer them to Department of Labor to see if they can find a job.
Okay, so with the regards to them, um, in the units, is it safe to assume that they're in units that have utilities?
Yes.
So they, they do have these power and water?
Yes.
So, and Guam Housing pays for that?
Yes, if they cannot pay for it. And then, um, you know, we try to get them to pay as soon as they're able to. And that's where we need extra funding from also. GURA pays, you know, for-
Is that, is that, is that a standard policy for GURA to pay for the utility costs for the, to hook up of the power and water and what other amenities? Is that the standard procedure that Guam Housing pays?
GURA has it because they get funding from the federal government.
No, the tenant, with GURA, the tenant, the tenant applies for the utilities.
Not, but they, not all of them pay for it. There's a certain amount of them that, number of them that GURA pays for. Are you smiling because you don't believe me?
That's not the case. Yeah, there, there are, there, 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 there is a formula that's utilized for the reimbursement for the utilities, and I do know that there's a former GURA board member here, but I'm not gonna put her on the spot.
No, but, but I'm saying that there are people that pay for their power and water at GURA.
Okay.
But there are people that GURA pays for.
So maybe the question I need to ask is, out of the paying units, just for the Lata Gardens, right? You have ninety, ninety-five units occupied, because we did some of the homework, thanks to our staff. There, there, there are one, two, three, four, at least five of those units ranging from four to nine months late. Did any one of those paying occupants apply for water and power? Or is it, or is it Guam Housing? They pay, right? They apply, right?
Yes.
So, if they applied, then why are you paying for those?
Cause they can't afford it.
That's why there's, that's why there's a program with Guam Housing Urban Renewal Authority and I, and I know that's a whole different ballgame, but-
Yes, Senator, we're not trying to make this a lifetime program that we have, we're just trying to get them off the streets. Some of-
I, I-
Our legislature has even referred people to us and we're trying to take them. We get referrals from all over, even the courts, even, you know, and we're trying to find us the right recipe for each of them. But it's like a study that we're doing now in some of these cases and I think that if we, the sooner that we can get funding for it, the, the better things will be.
But, but it will take away from the, the tenants who are paying today, who have the ability to pay and that's the-
So it comes back to the same solution, just kick them out?
Yeah.
No, tell me, Nae, I, I don't know if you have a-
No, no, Mr. Beneventi, that's not the right question. And again, based on the enabling legislation and why Guam Housing was created, it was to afford the opportunity for those who don't qualify in the indigent community as, as low-income, uh, participants, but cannot qualify to build their house. There was an opportunity to have, have this Guam Housing to provide for those who are in between, those working-class families who couldn't afford this but cannot be in this program, to be able to get on their feet with some assistance, but not to provide, and I, you know what? God forgive me if I'm, I'm just being a little bit, um, um-
But Senator, excuse me, but not everybody fits in that, that cookie cutter.
But, but you are, you, you, you are foreseeing the ones who pay on time and who's been a part of the program for a long time, you're saying they must pay, but then for all these other ones, no, we'll take care of the rest. We'll, we'll, we'll pay everything for you and that's not right because we do, Guam Housing has programs that provide pay rent to own. They have those low incomes, but not at what we're looking at today. And is where, where do we bang the gavel down and say, no, so you, the chair says 90 days, you say 30 days, but looking at the facial expressions of some of the employees out there, I'm getting mixed emotions. I'm really getting mixed emotions on how these projects should work and you cannot just say the funding. What if the government didn't have the funding and we had to look for resources? You're gonna let everything collapse? I don't want that to happen. I had an agency who had perfect clearances, perfect audits, clean audits, to come to just on Lata Gardens alone with a past due amount on existing tenants at 77,000 and asking the board, the board didn't get a clear picture either. That's the only reason why I'm asking for this. And I'm just wanting to say that based on the questions that Senator Blas brought up, what are the processes in place? Because there is, there is a double standard that is being set right now and I'm, I'm, I'm at oversight job, feeling really concerned about the management that's being up ahead and if the, if, if the board is not having a clear picture of what's going on, then I think that everybody needs to come together. Because this, this is the reason why this hearing is being said. And, and, and I'm looking at some of the faces out there and I'm seeing some clarification that's really, needs me to push more.
Maybe I should turn around then and go.
Well, anyways.
It's just Mr. Beneventi, that's not very nice.
No, I, I am serious, but you keep referring to the faces behind me that I don't see. But I'm, I'm letting you know that homelessness has come to us in different levels. There's people that, and you're right, that we shouldn't put them right next door and say, this program, uh, these guys can have it for free, you have to pay. You're right. And I, I wanna fix that. But at this point, the way to fix it is to ask you guys to come behind us and let's put some of these things-
Mr. Beneventi, it's almost like making it, making Guam Housing crash so that this policymaking body can bring the resources back to you so you guys can clear everything and that's not the case.
So what do we do, Nae, Senator? Let me ask you before-
And that's, I guess, Mr. Beneventi, that's, that's the line of questioning that I was, okay?
I understand.
Okay? Is within that 30 days that you have, okay? What is the normal process? You says you, this is something that, within 30 days, what is the normal process that we use to be?
I was following, it's a takeoff from our other program where the board in the past has approved, uh, the expenditures of monies for people who are, uh, fire victims or flooding victims or, and they become homeless, uh, because of different reasons. But lately, other people have become homeless for other reasons.
Okay.
So I'm trying to say that from that takeoff, uh, these people are provided, the Red Cross gives them three days and to recover and say, okay, you're out of the hotel, three days. So instead of using the hotel, I started using our existing units. So we don't have to pay money to the hotel, uh, for some of these people, which was authorized by the board in, in the past. So, you know, we're trying to correct and trying to reinvent other, uh, other programs. And some of it, yes, is gonna come to a screeching hole very soon, just like our Down Payment Assistance Program is coming to a screeching hole if we don't refund it.
Okay, Senator, for the record?
Yes. The board had approved five units for, you know, for emergency, uh, shelter and also for the homeless. Five units.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanna make that-
Yeah.
Make that clear. I think your concern is, are we, are we getting in an area where we shouldn't? And as Chairman, I would say yes, but Martin has brought, uh, Martin has brought before me and the board, you know, the, the, the concerns of what do we do with them if they have children? So we thought, and I've, I've told Martin this over time and time again, that we shouldn't get into this, there's GURA, but it's a community problem and if GURA can't address all of it, that we will take some in. That is why we allocated five homes, all right? To do our part in, in resolving some of this. So your question, and I think your concern and Madam Chairman's concern is that we're going into an area we shouldn't. And, and I agree with you guys because that will be our downfall if we continue to give these homes out and pay for utilities. But we did, as a board, allocated five units.
There's seven, uh, there's seven units being occupied right now for homeless.
Unless I'm mistaken, there's seven units right now being, that, 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 that is over the accepted board policy that you guys approved. So I just wanted to note that for the record, based on the information that was provided.
Okay, so, Mr. Flork, I guess, Mr. Beneventi, going back to-
If, if I may, what, what I as Chairman also suggested is that we try to work out with respect to the utilities, right? Try to work out with GPA, try to work out with Guam Waterworks as, as their contribution to the homeless, is that these five units be exempt, given, you know, X amount of dollars a month for, because you, of course, you don't wanna give them a carte blanche, power, you know, free power, they'll be running air conditions the whole day and stuff, but you wanna give them something reasonable. And that we were, I was hoping that, that Guam Waterworks and PW, I mean, and GPA would join in on the program to help us with the five units. Has that happened? I don't think so. Today I've learned that we're paying, we're paying for their utilities. But that's something certainly we, we've asked them to look into and I'm sure he has. Uh, so, that's, that's what we are with that.
But some of these people, if you leave them alone, Senator, it's not-
They won't even get power hooked up in their names. So, we can give them some of our vacant units to use for a while with no power and water, but what does that do, Nae, again, so?
Has that been approved by the board?
To go into vacant units and not, uh, provide for utilities? I mean, and not-
Absolutely not. No, no, we would be, we would be promoting substandard living if we allowed that.
Okay, going back to where I was going and I appreciate and I think that you were on the same wavelength with regards to, to some of the issues and some, you know, how to be able to tackle this and, but it is what it is. Um, if, and Mike, going back to the question I had with regards to what happens with these individuals within the 30 days, okay? Um, is there a process that we, that we work within this 30 days to try to get them, um, into programs provided elsewhere? Um, now, what happens after the 30 days if there's nothing found?
Sorry, some of them can be helped, some of them cannot be helped. You can do it at a certain period of time, every, every time they show up, but we can create different programs like that where we're, they just become like Guma San Jose. Guma San Jose keeps these people for, uh, what was that, was it 60 days? Does anybody know? Guma San Jose keeps them for something between 30 to 60 days and then they release them too. So there's a lot of people that are like nomads, they come to the Guam Housing Program, they go to the Guma San Jose Program, they go to another place to see where, where they can stay. Then they end up in the bus stop. Then it becomes a, a place where they can, you know, crime is committed here and there. There's a lot of different people out there, Senator, that are homeless and we try to tackle them as they come in and say, how can we help you? Some of them, uh, Mary's has some success stories where we even had a flooding victim that eventually turned out to be able to buy their own condo. But very rare in between does that happen. Um, you know, but there's gotta be a way that these people can be helped.
Uh, okay, I'm just gonna end this way. I just caution in, in the, you know, where we're at today and- I just caution in, in the, you know, where we're at today, and if we're going to continue this, I understand and I appreciate the nobleness in as far as the effort to be able to do this. You're just getting into some areas that may get us into some legal issues and some predicaments, you know, down the road, okay? You know, it's, one is, is, is basically first, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the question, okay? If eight people come, eight homeless families come to your doorstep, and you have five units, who makes that determination as to which five of those families are going to, are going to receive the assistance?
I guess it's me. And I would start with the, the ones that has the children.
Mayor?
My name is Mary Guerrero, I'm the loan administrator of Guam Housing Corporation. When we first attempted the homeless program, the board approved the five units, and they were the units that really weren't with major renovation, that we can actually make, generate income. There were units that, we removed the health and safety issues, but they weren't, you know, necessarily painted a new coat of paint, and things were, were, were in place just to get them in a housing. This is with the intent that we will provide power and water for 30 days. When they come in, we actually let them complete an application, we actually want them to go to Catholic Social Service, where we know that they are in fact homeless, and that they are in the count. This application goes through a committee, and if we, if the committee recommends that there is income, and maybe they're not just managing it, if there is, they're on the waiting list, and maybe they're number two in Section 8, if it's determined that this homeless family can transition to actually paying for their own, then that is what we're JHC will, will recommend, that we go ahead, take them in, because we know that they will eventually transition. If the delay, let's say for the Section 8, is taking another month, we, we tell them, then if you want to stay beyond the 30 days, you would have to pay for the water and power. The reason for this, so that they can get used to paying, because if you keep giving, they're not, they're never, they're going to be comfortable with that, and never moving forward to take care of their own necessities. So that was the way the program was intended. If, if it went beyond the 30 days, it was only in hopes that they were transitioning, and they would incur the cost of the utilities. Why they're beyond there, I'm going to have to defer to, but that is the policy that the board has instructed us, that it's really very temporary in nature, and every homeless individual that come in would have to complete an application, because we need to do our due diligence to determine, is this just, is this just going to be a freebie? Are they just milking the system? Or are they honestly committed to help themselves find their housing? And that is how, at least when I was assisting up there, that is how we were handling it. And yes, we did have one that was homeless with five children, now it's under Section 8, and is now renting a unit, and, and in our unit, that we have made renovation to meet Section 8. So that is, you know, the one I'm aware of, so anything else?
And not, it's only because not everybody meets that, that same cut, you know? And we don't have a program that, that fits all. We don't have anything yet. We would like to, and even if we copy the other states and the other cities that have homeless programs, we're, we're still not going to make that, that program that fits all.
Senator, I just want to inform Madam Chairman and other members of this committee that I really have got to depart. I explained that a little earlier to Madam Chairman, that I had to be out of here by 12, because I've got another pressing appointment that I, I can't cancel. I can't miss either. So I think, I think there's still another board member here, and if, if you need, direct any questions to the board that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and if, if anything, I'd like, as you being the chair of Guam Housing Corporation, I think it's important that the, that the committee, the board of directors, do look at the enabling legislation, and look what the programs that exist today, and what the mission mandate for the corporation is, so that you can follow those guidelines, because there's specifically given, and as much as we want to give and help, I think it's important that you guys try and at least follow this guideline. And I, I'll leave you with this thought before you leave, and I know you're late, is when we're looking at over 120,000 in, in uncollected revenues going back to the corporation, I think that's the first step into bringing resources back. So I'm hoping for continued collaboration, and hopefully the, the board can come back with us with, with some concrete plans to further collect on, on what's due for the corporation, for their utilization, for their programs as enabled.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and that point well taken, and, and just to let you know that we've got that already on, on, in motion, and we hope, we hope to definitely bring, we don't think we're going to resolve all our delinquencies, but bring it down to a very, very manageable and acceptable percentage, as with industry standard. Now, the, the collections before you, that you're concerned about, we think is very manageable. We just need to make sure it's being done. And, and that's definitely what the board has set, we've set that about a month and a half, two months ago. And we've got legal counsel involved, we've got the loan administrator involved, we've got Mr. Martinez involved on the rental side, we've got the president involved, and, and, you know, all the people that hold these positions. And, and for the record, I think we have very, very competent staff, and, you know, we, we, we feel it very manageable. And, and I think if we were to sit here 60 days from, from today, I think you'll see a big difference, because we have seen a decline quite a bit actually in the last 60 days, since we started collection efforts to beef it up, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, and I think this is a discussion that we can go on, but not to belabor the issue and stuff. I think you get the gist of where my concern is at, and I appreciate. Again, it's, we're here, but what are we doing to transition out of it? Okay? Thank you.
Senator?
You know, for the past maybe hour and a half, I heard about collections, and how do we get people to, to come in to pay? And maybe something Guam Housing may, may look into, and I know that the chairman was mentioning about the first of the month is when the rents are due. And maybe those that are having trouble paying their rent, maybe something like breaking it down into two payments, you know, the first, the first and the 15th. Because, you know, sometimes when an individual gets paid, they have a choice to make. Do they pay rent, or do they put food on the table? But I think if they break down their, their, their monthly payment for, or their monthly rent, you pay half of it on the first, and then the, the other half on the 15th, then they'll give them some type of relief to saying, well, at least I can, I can break down this payment. But I think when they go to the bank, they, they assume that they got to, or it is, they have to pay the whole amount that is due. So, you know, I mean, maybe taking a look at those that are having trouble paying their monthly, their monthly rent, to break it down into two payments, so that by the time the 15th come, if they didn't make the, the payment on the first, they know automatically that by the 15th, the whole amount will be due. So that will give you guys an opportunity to see who, okay, well, this individual missed their, their first month, the first payment on the first, maybe by the 10th, you know, your, your rent is coming up due, and just to let you know that you haven't paid on the first, so by the 15th, the total amount due for the rent is, you know, or the rent is total, the total amount will be due.
Your point is noted, I think.
Yeah, so hopefully something like that to help you guys out. But you know, Mr. Beneventi, I, I, you know, I don't, man, I, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes with determining, do we, do we put homeless people out, or do we try to help them and, and find a way to, to get them back onto their feet? And you're right, sometimes people are homeless for a reason that's beyond their control. And all they need is that, that, that helping hand to say, you know what, here's that, let us help you to, to put you into a home, and that we'll be able to assist you to move forward in life, and hopefully be able to, they be able to recognize that and say, you know, I'm not going to take advantage of this, I'm, I'm going to help, they're helping me help myself, so.
And some of them, there was even a guy on a wheelchair who offered to start painting his unit, and I told the staff to take him up on it.
Yeah, and maybe some, even with the, the homeless that are currently there, maybe something, a community yard work or something. I mean, you know, just something for them to, to make them feel that they're not just living there free, but they're going to be giving back by, by giving some type of community service back to the agency, and, you know.
We do encourage that.
Yeah, so in that way, they'll be able to contribute to their, to their home stay, but yet you'll be able to move them onto a process that takes them out of homelessness, and either put them in a home, or put them into a facility or a home that they can call their home in. But, you know, I, I really, I don't, well, I, it's, it's just hard to say, how do you guys, and yet you're right, how do you, how do you guys determine? Where do you draw that line, right? Sometimes that line does get blurry, because you, you're mandated by, by law to act in a certain way, but that human instinct takes over and says, I can't do this. You know? That, that person in you takes over and says, I, I'm, I'm not going to throw out another human being out into the street, knowing that they, I have that ability or that capability to help them. So hopefully that, you know, we'll be able to look over the struggles and help you guys where we can help you, but also knowing that there's a lot of work that you guys also need to, to do and be able to do that work.
On that, Senator, in the next few months, once we engage in larger renovation, larger number of units being renovated, we can attract tenants that can afford to pay that rent and stay affording that rent. But then comes the question of, what about those that can't afford that rent, and needs to go down one level or two levels? What do we do with them? But if it's, the, the question is LADA, that's the answer, is to renovate it and give it to those people who can afford that rent.
Because you're right, in the end, it does become a community problem. It becomes a government problem, and becomes a community problem. And if there's a way that we can work at it to where we can help it before it becomes a problem, then, you know, I think it becomes in the best interests of everyone involved. But thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
And, and that's the point, one point there, Senator, is that it's gotten away from us, and we need to bring it back where it becomes manageable, and before it even gets a lot worse. And it almost did already, so.
I guess we can go into the first-time homeowners assistance program. I do know that we have been very supportive in the efforts of giving that opportunity for our residents to get up to $10,000 in funding resources to actually build their new homes and better the quality of life for their children, and, and that program was, was, with the assistance of this, this August body, we were able to look at over 2.4, 2.5 million dollars. And I do know that the number of certificates that were issued were about 337, and of that total certificates dispersed was, is at 296. I know that there's a number of, of pending applications, and maybe one of you can explain why, because I know that the funding is still there, what, what's happening with that?
They're pending submission of documents that are required for us to move on and approve the application. It could be the financial institution's commitment letter. They went ahead and submit an application, we will consider that, but we would not make a final decision until such time. We know that there is a financial, there is a commitment letter from one of the participating financial assistants. Sometimes it's a matter of them taking the class. These are all required for eligibility in the program, and that's probably a pending document that is needed for them. Some are just very eager, they want to go in, they want to get on the waiting list. This does not create the waiting list, it's just that when your application is complete, then we will go ahead and move on to the actual review. And again, it goes through a committee to make sure that everything is met.
And how long is that timeline for this applicant?
They can come in in the morning, and by the end of the day, the committee would be finished and in for approval.
No, so, so based on those that are pending, because I know you have over 40, close to 50 participants that are, applications that are still pending, how long is that timeline before you go into the next applicant? Because there is a waiting list, am I right?
No, there's, there's no waiting list. There's no waiting list. Pending is because the application itself is not complete, but there's no waiting list of people that are waiting for funding. No, there's not a waiting list.
You guys, with respect to your program on, on mortgages, do you have any homes that have been, that are going through any foreclosure?
We have, I believe there are four that we've had notice of sales. Like I mentioned at, at another hearing, that our, our goal is to, for them to retain homeownership, but for those that really, they just can't do it, they can't need it, they, we've, you know, they don't want to sell it, they just want to, you know, they just gave up. We went ahead and we are pursuing foreclosure, and I believe there's four that with an actual notice of sale already published. Up to the date of the notice of sale, they still have that opportunity to bring it current or to pay it off. That's still, you know, we're required to publish it three consecutive weeks, so they still have that opportunity. As a matter of fact, even after foreclosure, they have the right of redemption. You know, they pay that right, up to a year, so. But, you know, rest assured, we've tried, even before we refer it to our legal, we've tried to work with them, we tried to see on different servicing action, whether to refinance them, maybe at a lower interest rate, which is the prevailing, or try to see if they can do a deferment, a moratorium. But if again, the issue is because of loss of income, how do you pursue for continued success to retain if they can't pay, because there's no source of income for them to continue the loan? Get a family member to assist, get a family, but that, at the end of the day, that is borrower's choice. And we can only suggest, we, we advise them that homeownership is available for them. But like I said, for those that truly want to retain homeownership and are working with us, we will explore whatever avenues available within our policy, within the law, to go ahead and help them.
How many homes under the program right now? You only have four.
That are going, we have several actually that are with our legal, with our legal counsel, but they're in different phases. They could be in a workout, they could be, you know, I think one of them offered to try to give it back to Guam Housing, but even at that, Guam Housing has to ensure that there's no second mortgage, because then now we allow for the second mortgage, and we don't want to weaken our position as first mortgagee.
So do you guys have a process in place as it relates to, to those homes that are, are on the verge of foreclosure, or on the verge of being so many months behind? Do you guys have a, a process in place to deal with these?
We have a collection servicing policy, foreclosure policy, we have all that in place. Even when we acquire the property, we have a policy. After the 90 days, even within the 90 days, and we see that they're just not responding to our letters, we actually go out there and inspect the property and try to meet with them, and they're not able to come in, we've, like I said, we try to offer them, maybe we need to refinance your, your loan, maybe to make it more affordable for you, reduce the rate, maybe do re-amortization, where you just take the balance and stretch it for another 30 years. A moratorium only if, again, it's going to be temporary in nature. We want to ensure that we're not just delaying the inevitable. We want to work with them. So after we've determined, and, and they could be So after we've determined, and they could be beyond the 90 days, if they're on a payment plan, we'll retain and work with them and let them do additional partial payment agreement. But after they reneg on that payment plan or they just can't, we have no other options, then we would forward it to our legal counsel. Unfortunately, sometimes our borrowers react when it is with our legal counsel because they know they have the teeth to pursue legal proceedings to protect our interests. So that's where some of them are. They may be with legal, but not necessarily to foreclose. If they're in and they're showing that they can't actually come back and make that payment, that is what, that would be the determination of legal counsel.
So the percentage on the mortgage, on this program that exists with Guam Housing today, which is probably one of the main reasons why Guam Housing exists today, what is the percentage of the resources that come into Guam Housing that falls under this program?
Under?
The building homes. What percentage of the resources does Guam Housing receive from this program? What percentage is it?
Oh, from the first time?
Not from the first time, from homeownership. Is it 10%, 20%, 30%? There was talks about some of the programs not getting administrative costs and that's why you're not making any money. So for this program, how much, how much resources?
All of the interests that we generate should go back to origination of loans. So all the interests for the loans, it's a revolving loan fund. And there's different loan programs for, we have certain rates for the different programs that are, again, established by law, like the 6%. We can go, depending on the prevailing rate, we can go as low as 4%. So whatever is available and our accounting manager says, Mary, I've got this amount, we already have people in the pipeline that are either pre-approved, subject to availability of funding. We're not stopping at processing individuals that are coming in and we determine what they're buying power so they can plan ahead. And as soon as funds are available, then we go ahead and we say, okay, now we can go ahead and look for a place to purchase, go get your contract, order appraisal, those would be the second phase after we actually can commit to funding. So that, the percentage, as of this date, I believe we have, how many loans, Alicia?
Okay. Thank you. I guess I want to go ahead and work, something that caught my eye, and any one of you can answer this. You do have several vendors that you pay trash collection for to cover the cost for rental of trash bins and containers for pickup services. And you have it at one, two, three, four, five, six different places. And total spent from fiscal years 2012 to 2015 was over $42,000. And that was probably another resource expense that probably could go back into the coffers of Guam Housing if I could find out who, what are these vendor payments for? I mean, I know what it's for, but are we playing for our clients', I mean, our tenants' trash collection? What are these payments for?
For the apartment units, we do pay for that.
For the apartment units, we pay, we do pay for the disposal of the trash.
So for all the apartment units?
No. Just the apartment?
Go ahead and speak into the microphone.
Which is Asadus?
Say that again.
Mary, get your own mic. Asadus is what we call the apartment complex because it's, but the other single units like LADA, people have their own trash except for...
So they pay for their own units?
Yes, ma'am, except for maintenance. We have a trash bin for our maintenance shop and these people that run away, leaving couches behind and all that goes into, we also pay dump sites so we can get rid of some of these old toilets, wooden furnitures and things like that, which is really a high volume.
Okay. Did you want to ask anything on vendors? Okay.
But I don't think it's six, is it, Alicia? We have one bin in Asadus, one bin in LADA. And that's it, right?
You pay?
Well, except for the dumping, I'm sorry, except for the dumping fees that we pay for the landfill and every dump.
Yeah, because you have six different...
Yeah, but they're not bins, they're just places that we get to and dump metal at and dump tires at and dump couches and things like that.
So it's not just only the apartment rentals are the ones that have?
Yes.
That include the trash pickup? Because they're apartments, right? Okay. As it relates to equipment, how many transportation or vehicles does Guam Housing own?
Of course, Senator. It's five, Senator?
Five?
Five, yes, ma'am.
And are they all at Guam Housing? Are there any, are there any vehicles at any other entity?
As of today, they're all at Guam Housing.
Okay, because according to the report...
And we gave away, yeah, we gave away one of our trucks to the telephone forbear because our staff said it was not fixable.
Is the Board aware of that?
The Board?
Did that get approval?
No, it just needs procurement division down to transfer the property.
If I'm not mistaken, one of the vehicles that the employee...
And then we had another, I think it was a Nissan or Toyota sedan that we got, another pickup. So far, it's two pickups since I've been in and one car had been disposed of.
So there's no vehicles at any other agency that's being utilized right now?
As of today, no. But yes, we had one at the Governor's Office.
Okay, and that's been returned?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have any staff detail to any of the other government agencies to work?
No.
Okay. Sure. Senator Blas, your...
Let's go back to that trash bin that you have at your apartment units. How many apartment units are there?
Twenty-four.
Huh?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Yes, sir.
Was there a way that you could have incorporated? So they, these apartments, they pay monthly rental fee? Was there, do you incorporate or is it incorporated within their rental trash?
At this point, no. But at the time, remember that when those units were built, you know, we didn't have this trash bins that are available today. We've been suggesting that they start looking at getting the tenants to take their own. We just haven't gotten there.
Nobody in as far as sharing costs with regards to...
Or that, we could probably look at that and maybe increase. We've increased rent one or two times since I've been in. We didn't earmark it for that, but I guess we could, in the next raise, we'll earmark something. It just happened, one of those things that we haven't really gotten to. But I appreciate the suggestion.
Senator Tilling, Senator Mary, any questions on that? I guess this exhausts a lot of the questions I had. And I do want to thank the staff for, Mr. Beneventi, for giving us a lot of the information that was required. And again, based on having to just have a clearer picture of the programs that Guam Housing does today and should do today versus what's really happening and trying to look at the resources that could be kept and what needs to be collected, I think it's important that we do have a follow-up. I know that based on some of the questions that were asked earlier, there really wasn't a true picture coming our way. And that's why, again, we had to just regroup and come back and these questions need to be asked. I will share with you that I will, as Oversight Chair, ask for a follow-up meeting. So hopefully that your plan, it's in place that will take care of the existing programs and what literally Guam Housing is supposed to be doing that those enabling legislation is followed. And maybe not threading on something that we shouldn't be in the business of doing right now, and though we want to help and want to work with, we do know that there are a lot of programs that are still out there that work closely with the government and the administration. Because yes, it is the government's mandate to provide for the basic services. And I understand that clearly. And as all of us up here know, that we all, you know, being culturally sensitive to the way we were raised and how our hospitality is, I know that when it's, when we're in trying times, we kind of extend that open arm. But when do we stop? When do we stop? And when do we just saying, hey, let's take a back, let's take a step back because we've got to be able to maintain our own house before we give to others? And I think that's really important to look at also. I just want to say that I'm very grateful that Mr. Beneventi, that the staff was very courteous in providing this information. I know there was a couple of things that I still had asked for, but I said that, you know, when we do the follow-up, and hopefully my questions can be answered before the next follow-up hearing. But I'm just glad to say that now that we have a clearer picture of what we need to do and how we need to do, I'm going to say to you, Mr. Beneventi, that it's important that we at least try and recover at least portions or a majority of what is outstanding, especially because there's still a lot of that money that is owed with active units. And it's bothersome to be this high, knowing that in the past, we weren't, in the last several years, we weren't at this. So that's what's one of the triggers that brought this meeting here today. And again, hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll go ahead and bring an additional update so the people of Guam know that our programs are still very strong. The opportunities are still there to provide for first-time homeowners, homes to lease-to-own kind of programs and the rental programs that exist in Guam Housing and why we're here today. And that our listening audience will know that this program is going to be strong and we're not going to run it to the ground. So with that being said, I know it's past our lunchtime. It's almost 1:00. I would have, I will call this public hearing Oversight on Guam Housing to an adjournment. It's about 12:50 right now. Thank you, everybody, for coming and please have a wonderful week. God bless.
Senator?